Now being that come to order. Uh, this is December the 7th. You want to remember December the 7th, 1941. Looking around the room, I'm probably the only war baby in the room. But the big war started that day. Let's think about it as we do our pledge. Let's think about people who gave their lives. Uh, December the 7th, 1941. The day the big war started. Stand to the pledge. Our pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, on their daughter, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All war members present today, uh, Mr. Oakesley, um, again.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve the agenda.
We have a motion.
I make the motion. Thanks.
We have a second.
Thanks.
All in favor, aye. Aye. Any opposed? Aye, aye. The superintendent's report, Mr. Oakesley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, today to start out with, I have some items for executive session I'd like for the board to please consider. Uh, graduation requests, uh, a pre-K student matter, and a potential litigation. Graduation requests, pre-K student matter, and potential litigation. I came early today to the floor because I have an award that I would like to give our board. If y'all could come down, I'll, uh, present this to you. You can see the picture that's up on the screen. Every year, City Current and WKNO out of Memphis, uh, gives an award called the Spark Award. And, uh, this year, the Soto County Schools is receiving the award, uh, for corporations with more than 500 employees. Uh, this is what was said about the Soto County Schools. It stands for the beacon of excellence, not just for the Soto County, but for the broader Memphis, Mizzou community. With over 4,000 dedicated employees, DCS has been a constant, consistent emblem of philanthropy, a hub for encouraging volunteerism, and a powerful force for positive change, making significant impact, uh, within the community. And so, uh, the award ceremony will be on WKNO, uh, Channel 10, uh, this coming Monday at 8:00 PM. You see the picture up on the board. We'll sneak preview that one. Sorry, I didn't see it. Anyway, so, but it'll, it'll air, uh, Monday night if the Soto County Schools get that award. Uh, but I did want to, uh, present this award, uh, today to our board members, uh, for their support of our schools and all their work. And that, that award's kind of dangerous, so I'm serious, man. That might kill you. Great, thank you. Seriously, but they gave us that award that day. They told us to be very careful. They weren't going to give it. And let them care. Today is, uh, is a great day for our board meeting. We've got students that we're going to be recognizing today, uh, for their athletic accomplishments. And to start out with today, I'm going to ask our district athletic director, uh, Coach Anthony Jenkins to come forward. We have some individual state champions that we would like to recognize.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
We have three outstanding individual state champions that we want to recognize this afternoon. We're going to start with Caitlin Burge from Hernando High School, 2007 A cross country
If we have any, you have family here that'd like to get a picture. Would you like to get a picture? You're scared. I meant to tell you all that. Anybody come get pictures.
Our next individual state champion is Tyron Robinson from the Southern Central High School. She won the 50-yard freestyle and the 100-yard freestyle state championship.
Mr. Johnson is...
And Coach.
And our third individual state champion is Owen Campbell from Lewisburg High School, 2007 A 100 yard backstroke state champion.
This time, I'll introduce, uh, Principal Chris Perkins from Lewisburg High School, who'll be recognizing the state championship volleyball.
Good afternoon. Thank you, uh, for being intentional at this time to recognize these, uh, athletes, these students for all their accomplishments. Um, I'm going to introduce Coach Amy Hinderhosek in here just in a second. If you know anything about these large team sports, it's next to impossible. The stars have the line to, to see that road come to fruition for a state championship. And for these girls, these coaches, uh, that happened this year. Really cool fact about, uh, this state title is we hold the last, uh, ever 6A title, uh, with the baseball team, and we hold the first ever 7A title with volleyball team since the new classification. So that's, that's just cool history there. But, uh, Coach Hinderhosek, if you'll come up, uh, she's going to introduce the players one time to get their award, uh, and then she can recognize her other coaches that are here today.
All right. Olivia Alexander.
Ally K. Hall. Ella Grace Holloway. Leona Claire Stokes. On behalf of Lewisburg Volleyball, I'd like to thank you guys for having us here today. And I'd like to congratulate our girls again, and I'm glad that you guys are doing this for me, and that's a really good honor. And I'd like to recognize, I have three coaches here of our five. We have Coach Parker, uh, Coach Courtney, and Coach Lindsay Badcock that are here with us today. Thank you, everybody.
All right, turn back, go up to get a picture.
Hey, two rows, you're in the back. Hey, take two steps. On a window, if you're in the back.
Now, I'm going to say the, the game they played in to win the state title not only had to be one of those exciting games, it went down to the very, very end. Uh, fifth set, it was the, it was 15-13 or something like that. And then, but not only that, I think it was the hottest volleyball game in the state. If you were there, it was seriously, it was in the high nineties and, you know, it was so humid hot. Anyway, but great effort there by the, uh, Lewisburg Patriots. It was a good day, decent percent Patriots. Yeah, um, and so with that being said, I want to congratulate our individual state champions and congratulate, uh, our volleyball state champions. We appreciate you coming here today, for the parents, family members who are here. We appreciate your support, Soto County Schools. We appreciate our principals', uh, support of our athletes also. So now, at this time, we are about to start with the regular business support meeting. You are welcome to stay, but if you'd like to go, now would be a good time. Ms. Duke is principal of the Southern Central Elementary. We look forward to hearing about the Southern Central Elementary School. They got here bright and early this afternoon. They were ready.
You know, we are as early as late in our person, so that's just kind of what we do. Good afternoon. Thank y'all so much for giving us an opportunity to talk about what we love the most, which is DCES. Um, I have two teachers that I brought today. I would say one teacher, but again, we're just kind of being overachievers, I guess. So I have two. One is Ms. Wells. She teaches fourth grade. She's been in Soto County Schools for 14 years. All 14 years have been at my school. Last year, she was our teacher of the year. Um, and then I have Ms. Moore. She's been teaching 10 years, but this is only her second year here at DCES. They are part of what we call our SEC. It's not football. It is, Mr. President, if you're that way, but it's called our school enhancement committee, and they're going to represent them today. So thank y'all.
Hello. How are y'all doing? Good. And I'm Ms. Wells.
I'm Ms. Moore.
And we love to talk about our DCES culture because we are a part of the SEC committee, which started last year just because we wanted to do some things to enhance our school. Um, and, um, with our school culture, we were thinking about three things. Student character, parents and community, um, and staff, and morale, which are all three very important things. And so, pillar one with student character, we have things like our school-wide teams, which come from going to Rock Park Academy, and Ms. Duke, um, decided that this was something that we could implement in our school in naked hours. And so, we have four teams, and we do shout-outs for teachers and students. And the students can write shout-outs for each other, and teachers write shout-outs for students, things like that, even fellow team members. Um, and then we have the top office referrals and spin day. And we're going to go through those just a little bit each.
So our school-wide teams, like Ms. Wells will say, is we kind of picked that idea from Rock Park Academy, and we brought it back, and it just kind of builds a community and a family. And they, um, they get to be on a team. We have four teams, and we have pictures of all four of our teams. We have Vanguard, who are our leaders. Um, we have Amazaji, which is friendship. We have Izazi, which is for scholars, and we have, um, Sonador, which is our dreamers. So we have four teams, and we have this big spin day. The kids love it, and they get to come and they form a team, and that team becomes their family. They build the, you know, the positive culture where they have a mentor in fifth grade and fourth grade, especially our third grade kids, because we're a great basketball school. Um, and they really get into it, and they, they build these communities, and they earn points for their team. And then we have a school-wide competition for the most points at the end of every nine weeks, and it, it's a really cool, big idea that we...
And their grades and their character come into play to get any points. Um, usually, I mean, you should see a spin day. I don't know if anybody's ever been through one of our spin days, and they roll around in a limo or a big school bus, and there's a red carpet and lines of good graders, and they're cheering them on. Fourth grade in the cafeteria and in the activity room, just shouting every time a group comes in. It's exciting, and they get to slide down the slide, similar to Rock Park.
So we have some pictures of spin day, um, and how crazy wild it gets for our team spirit.
And all four colors. Everybody just wears their colors.
So really we build, the kids eat it up.
Positive office referrals. Um, a teacher can refer a student who's got some excellent qualities and has shown some respectful, um, characters or responsibility, things that are just, you know...
Above and beyond.
Yes, going above and beyond, not just something they have to do every day. And then they go and see Ms. Duke, and they get a little despatched, happy. They love it. They love to be recognized for all their inner knowledge.
And we have something, pillar, that we call shout-outs. Shout-outs are different because positive office referrals come from just teachers and staff, but shout-outs, the students can give shout-outs as well as teachers, and they're read on the announcement in the morning and the afternoons, and the kids can get it to their friends or their teachers. And so, it's just all about building each other up. And so, we do shout-outs, so they can do that. But positive office referrals, uh, step up so that they get, you know, the best effects, and the principal happy.
We love you, our next.
Our second pillar, so we have the third pillars. We talked about our students and how they promote our culture, but we also like to bring in our community and our parents to build our culture as well. So we have family bingo night we want to look at. We started movie nights. We have guest readers, and then, of course, our talent show, and then our art show is incorporated for the first time this year. So we want to discuss that, uh, as far as bringing our community in.
Family bingo night was insane. I set up our cafeteria for a third of our cafeteria, and I kid you not, they just kept coming and kept coming and kept coming until our entire cafeteria was filled, and we had to bring in more tables and chairs. This was the craziest fun night ever. Somebody counted about 600. It was, it was so fun. It was. And, uh, I was the caller, and we called out, and, I mean, people were shouting. There were prizes that were donated, and, I mean, they had a great night. And, I mean, even parents and kids were super excited and kept just telling us how much fun it was. So we, we really enjoyed that, and we'll do another one in the next semester.
Yes, so our plan is one family bingo and family movie night every semester. So we did our first movie night this time, too. Um, was it Halloween? And we watched the Halloween, um, Haunted Mansion, the one with Eddie Murphy.
The Friday.
Yes, and, um, that was a huge hit, too. There was chairs all over the place. We had concessions, and the kids are so excited to see teachers outside of the classroom that it's just, it just, I think it just solidifies just being a community, a family, of people.
That whole area was packed with chairs.
Yeah, it was, it was, it was fun. Um, so we plan on doing those again, and we want to make that an annual thing, so. Our guest readers.
Guest readers. We've had, we've been doing this for several years, and, um, we get a guest from our community, and I know, I think Mr. President, your wife, your colleagues, many of you others have come and been a guest reader. But we're trying to look for people that have jobs in our community so that they can come and talk about those readers, but also read to them, and they see that, you know, people outside of our community, you know, were different and, you know, normal people too, white police officers and nurses and firefighters, so. Um, kids really enjoy it. They, they are after people walk them down to our classrooms, and, and the people really enjoy coming to be a part. Some, some parents come, you know, they'll invite their peers or, you know, counselors or somebody, so that's really fun.
Our talent show. This is, um, our fifth graders have a chance to show us everything that they can do. Um, they come in, they sing, they play piano, they dance, jump, gymnastics, wasn't the word, twisting.
Hardcore this year.
Yes, and so they, they, they are really proud to just show the younger kids, you know, what they can do, their talent, and they incorporated a new one this year. Ms. Maggie Neal came up with adding the art show, so the fifth graders displayed some art as they walked into the talent show. Um, and it's just, it really builds that rapport through our school, and the third and the fourth graders get so excited about being able to show their talents once they get to fifth grade, and the fifth graders are just beaming with pride, and they just, they do it for us at school, but they also have the community come in the day before, and they get to see everything, too. So I love that we make time for our students and our community, yes, and we're pulling community everyday superheroes from the community to, to... But it was a hit this year. It was great. Y'all haven't seen it on Facebook, there are pictures out there. They're really cool, so. I'm a, I'm a third grade teacher, so I just can't talk about it. Also, we added some pictures for you if you haven't seen them. I'm sorry, I just want a couple more seconds there. It was really cool.
Kids did all the art, too. The, there was that behind the scenes. They get to be directors, all the lights, and we, that was cool. Love it.
And then our last pillar that we want to hit on is our staff morale and how we bring in our positive culture through our staff and our teachers. Um, we have the woo-woo wagon teacher of the month, duty-free lunch and food truck, and then we're going to add a fifth one we want to talk about, our, our ducks, and we'll get there. Um, so our woo-woo wagon.
Um, this is something that was created, I want to say about Ms. Milbrook, maybe, um, but just putting a happy on that cart and rolling around to the hallways and letting each teacher get something off. Um, this year, we got some of our parent and community support to support some of the wagons, so that, you know, we can have a treat every once in a while. It's so nice to just be like, oh, just go get people a treat off of the wagon, you know, it's just...
Woo-woo.
Out of the woods. It is. It is. So great.
Our teacher of the month is something that our SEC team kind of thought that would boost our staff morale. Um, so Ms. Duke and Ms. Milbrook pick a teacher every month, and these are our four that have had the recognition this year. Um, and so they are picked and selected to, by demonstrating hard work and dedication, inspiring our kids to learn, and just willing to go above and beyond, you know, what is already typically expected of us. So those are, so far, four teachers of the month. And when they win teacher of the month, we have a choice board. They get to pick, like, caffeine or guitar. They get to steal Ms. Duke's parking spot in front of the school, you know, so. Just a little, a little happy because we, we're not hard to please.
Right.
About that I won that, yeah. I'm going to work a little harder.
Duty-free lunch was really great. Um, they ask our parents to come in for our PTO, and they watch our lunch while we go and get to have a little bit of peaceful lunch at that point. Um, but the cafeteria can be a little, you know, a little loud sometimes, so a little overwhelming. So, um, that is also just such a nice treat to get every once in a while.
And be able to uninterrupted, please, spend time with your, your friends at work without having to say.
And get good pictures with Ms. Moore.
I did not add that picture. Somebody else did. Just ignore the pictures. I, I love them. That is my motivation.
Oh.
This year, something that we started doing was we're getting food trucks to come in, and so even though we didn't have to do free lunch, we were able to go get something that wasn't bologna sandwiches that we had to bring from home, and so we really enjoyed being able to just step out and get food truck food. Um, so that was really cool, something that we started this year, and we're looking forward to doing more of that. The last thing we wanted to talk about that we did add was our ducks. So I'll let you take it over.
So at the beginning of the school year, Ms. Duke and Ms. Milbrook have ducks, and on the bottom it has a number, and everybody gets to choose the rubber decky.
Yes.
And if your name is called over the intercom, there, sometimes they have things that people donated or prizes that they've gotten, and we get to come up and pick something as a prize with, if our duck number is called today, so that's really fun. We try not to run. I run. I'm far away from home.
She pushed me once. We, um, we really, we really enjoy them. We come here and talk about DCES. We love our school. We love our work family. We love our kids, and we just appreciate the time that you give us, too.
Love the time you take.
Yes.
Thank you. Very positive. That's great. We appreciate the presentation. That was really good. Really good. Ms. Duke, we appreciate, uh, you organizing this, appreciate your leadership at the school, and thank y'all for coming out. That's great. Thank y'all. Merry Christmas.
You too.
Y'all can say.
I have work to do. I have to go back and get my rubber ducky.
Thank you. Y'all take, making plays, Mr. Superintendent.
Furnish your pool.
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, we have a personnel contract that we should discuss that will be discussed in executive session.
Thank you. Approval of the nominee. Do I have a recommendation for approval of the nominee?
I make the, uh, I make the motion.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye? Aye. Aye, aye. The superintendent, A to R. Mr. Oakesley.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve the consentions. Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve the consentance.
Board, do we have a motion?
I make that motion.
We have a second.
I'll say.
All in favor, I?
I.
Any vote, I have it. New bid. Director Williams. Architectial services at an in-house ticket booth at Olive Branch High School. Does he talk?
Yes, sir. We're requesting permission to enter into a contractual agreement with Allen and Oshel for our architectural services for Olive Branch School baseball ticket booth.
Mr. Dawson, your recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve entering into a contractual agreement with Allen Oshel for the baseball ticket booth at Olive Branch High School.
Board, do we have a motion?
I make that motion.
We have a second.
Second.
All in favor, I?
I.
Any vote, I have it. Permission to advertise for bids for a ticket booth with the week.
Yes, sir. We're requesting permission to advertise for bids for the new baseball ticket booth at Olive Branch High School.
Dawson, your recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve advertising for bids for the baseball ticket booth at Olive Branch High School.
Board, do we have a motion? We have a second.
Second.
All in favor, I?
I.
Any vote, I have it. Architectural services at an in-house floor in for Olive Branch High School.
Yes, sir. We're requesting permission to enter into a contractual agreement with Allen and Oshel for our architectural services for Olive Branch High School floor replacement project.
Mr. Dawson, your recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve entering into contractual agreement with Allen and Oshel for the floor replacement project at Olive Branch High School.
Board, do we have a motion?
I make that motion.
We have a second.
Second.
All in favor, I?
I.
Any vote, I have it. Permission to advertise for bids on the floor replacement with the week.
Yes, sir. Requesting permission from the board to advertise for bids on Olive Branch High School floor replacement project.
Mr. Dawson, your recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve advertising for bids for the floor replacement project at Olive Branch High School.
Board, do we have a motion?
I make that motion.
We have a second.
Second.
All in favor, I?
I.
Any vote, I have it. Architectural, architectural services at an in-house floor and project for South Haven.
Yes, sir. Requesting permission from the board to enter into a contractual agreement with Allen Oshel for our architectural services for the South Haven High School floor replacement project.
Mr. Dawson, your recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve entering into contractual agreement with Allen Oshel for architectural services for the floor replacement project at South Haven High School.
Board, do we have a motion?
I make that motion.
We have a second.
Second.
All in favor, I?
I.
Any vote, I have it. Permission to advertise for bids for the floor and project at South Haven High School.
Yes, sir. Requesting permission from the board to advertise for bids on the South Haven High School floor replacement project.
Mr. Dawson, your recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve advertising for bids for the floor and project at South Haven High School.
Board, do we have a motion?
Make the motion.
We have a second.
Second.
All in favor, I?
I.
Any vote, I have it. Architectural services at an in-house paving project for Horn Lake Elementary.
Yes, sir. Requesting permission to enter into a contractual agreement with Allen Oshel for our architectural services for Horn Lake Elementary School paving project.
Mr. Dawson, your recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve entering into a contractual agreement with Allen Oshel for our architectural services for the paving project at Horn Lake Elementary.
Board, do we have a motion? We have a second.
Second.
All in favor, I?
I.
Any vote, I have it. Permission to advertise for bids for paving, the paving project at Horn Lake Elementary School, Mr. Williams?
Yes, sir. Requesting permission from the board to enter into a contractual, no, requesting permission from the board to advertise for bid on Horn Lake Elementary School paving project.
Mr. Dawson, your recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve advertising for bids for the paving project at Horn Lake Elementary School.
Board, do we have a motion?
I make that motion.
We have a second.
Second.
All in favor, I?
I.
Any vote, I have it. Permission to advertise for bid for the paving project for Horn Lake Elementary.
Yes, sir. Requesting permission to enter into a contractual agreement with Allen Oshel for our architectural services for the Horn Lake Middle School paving project.
Your recommendation, Mr. Dawson?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve entering into a contractual agreement with Allen Oshel for their architectural services for the paving project at Horn Lake Middle School.
Board, do we have a motion? We have a second.
Second.
All in favor, I?
I.
Architectural services at an in-house playground improvements at Horn Lake Elementary.
Joe, Joe.
You know, Miss.
Yes, yes.
Permission, paving project?
Yes.
Okay. Permission to advertise for bids for the paving project, Mr. Williams?
Yes, sir. Um, requesting permission to advertise for bids on the Horn Lake Elementary School paving project.
Mr. Dawson, your recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve advertising for bids for the paving project at Horn Lake Middle School.
Board, do we have a motion?
I make that motion.
We have a second.
Second.
All in favor, I?
I.
Any vote, I have it. Architectural services at an in-house playground improvements for Horn Lake Elementary School, Mr. Williams?
Yes, sir. Requesting permission to enter into a contractual agreement with Allen Oshel for our architectural services to Horn Lake Elementary School playground improvement project.
Mr. Dawson, your recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve entering into a contractual agreement with Allen Oshel for their architectural services for playground improvements for Horn Lake Elementary School.
Board, do we have a motion? We have a second.
Second.
All in favor, I?
I.
Any vote, I have it. Permission to advertise for bids for playground improvement for Horn Lake Elementary School, Mr. Williams?
Yes, sir. Requesting permission to advertise for bid on the Horn Lake Elementary School playground improvement project.
Mr. Dawson, your recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve advertising for bids for the playground improvements at Horn Lake Elementary School.
Board, do we have a motion?
I make that motion.
We have a second.
Second.
All in favor, I?
I.
Any vote, I have it. Bids for erosion repairs at Horn Lake High School athletic field, Mr. Williams?
Yes, sir. Bids were open on November the seventh for the athletic field. They're also a pair of five, they're red seven bids that will receive my recommendation except the lowest and the best bid from Woods Construction.
Mr. Dawson, your recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve the lowest and best bid from Woods Construction for the erosion repairs at the Horn Lake High School athletic.
Board, do we have a motion?
I make that motion.
We have a second.
Second.
All in favor, I?
I.
Any vote, I have it. Contractual agreement for Woods Construction for Horn Lake High School athletic field erosion.
Yes, sir. Requesting permission to enter into a contractual agreement with Woods Construction to provide architectural, to provide services on the Horn Lake High School athletic field erosion project.
Mr. Dawson, your recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve entering into a contractual agreement for Woods Construction Services for the repairs to the Horn Lake High School athletic.
Board, do we have a motion? We have a second.
Second.
All in favor, I?
I.
Any vote, I have it. Williams?
Yes, sir.
Bids for produce for child nutrition department.
Yes, sir. Bids were open on November the thirtieth for fresh produce for child nutrition departments. My recommendation to accept the lowest and only bid from Mississippi Fruit and Vegetable Company.
Mr. Dawson, your recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve the only bid from Mississippi Fruit and Vegetable for the fresh produce for child nutrition.
Board, do we have a motion?
I make that motion.
We have a second.
Second.
All in favor, I?
I.
Any vote, I have it. Uh, paid the vendor purchase group issue for Southern Central High School, Mr. Williams?
Yes, sir. In your package, the letter from the principal of the Southern Central High explaining an unpaid invoice for A V A N language proficiency assessment. The former bookkeeper is no longer with the district and the principal slipped the procedure in place to prevent this from happening again. Schools requesting permission from the board to pay for the review.
Mr. Dawson, your recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve the request by the vendor of the person who issued Southern Central High School.
Board, do we have a motion?
I make that motion.
Board, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, I?
I.
Any vote, I have it. Requested reimbursement of stolen cell phone in Horn Lake Middle School, Mr. Williams?
Yes, sir. In your package, the letter from the principal of Horn Lake Elementary School requesting to reimburse a parent for cell phone that was confiscated by the teacher subsequently stolen while in custody of the teacher. They're asking permission to pay for the phone over their student activity.
Mr. Dawson, your recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve the request for the reimbursement for stolen cell phone in Horn Lake Middle School.
Board, do we have a motion?
I make that motion.
We have a second.
Second.
All in favor, I?
I.
Any vote, I have it. Thank you. We got Ms. Graves. Thank you for revenue and expenditures in October.
Our, our revenue collections, uh, throughout October for general funds are at eighty-eight million, eight forty-five of nine. Still about nine percent higher than F Y twenty-three. We, last year we were at eighty-one million, four hundred and sixty-three thirty-three. It's the same reasoning this month that we're up as opposed to last month. Our revenues for all funds were at a hundred million, five oh four three eighteen, which is virtually the same as F Y twenty-three. This time last year, we were receiving a lot of S R reimbursements. So that's, and this year we did not. So it was a big computer error and some other things. So, um, that was the reason it's virtually the same. Our general fund expenditures in October are eighty-six million, three ninety-nine, six ninety-five. And we are continuing to be about nine percent higher than F Y twenty-three for our expenditures. Our expenditures for all funds were at a hundred twenty-two million, seven oh four five twenty-nine. Uh, that includes our construction expenditures, which if y'all haven't gone past the end of high school, they have been going dang busters. We would thank those bills left and right. Uh, the increased expenditures is a lot of the budget and we continue to trim about two percent lower than our budget.
Mr. Dawson, your recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve the statement of revenue expenditures for October twenty twenty-three.
Board, do we have a motion?
I make that motion.
We have a second.
Second.
We have a second.
All in favor, I?
I.
Any vote, I have it. Balance balance sheet for October, Miss Gray?
The fund balance for all general funds is at a hundred and sixty-five million, oh eighty-four, three thirty-six. We're up twenty percent over, um, twenty-one percent over F Y twenty-three, which last year was at one thirty-six, two three one nine seven. However, in October last year, we did a ten million dollar transfer to our miscellaneous construction. So if you take that into account, uh, it's really about thirteen percent, which is very close to last one, which is fourteen percent. So it's kind of skewed for a whole entire year until we catch up. So, uh, that happened in October of last year. And our all funds fund balance is at two hundred thirty-six million, four twenty-two, seven fifty-four.
Mr. Dawson, your recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve the combined balance sheet by October twenty twenty-three.
We have a motion?
I make that motion.
We have a second.
Second.
All in favor, I?
I.
Any vote, I have it. Statement of cash flow by October twenty twenty-three, Miss Gray?
The October cash balance for district maintenance is a hundred and sixty million, four ninety-one, oh sixty-one. That's about fifty-nine percent of our entire cash balance for all funds, which is at two seventy-two, four sixteen, eight ninety-nine. And our amount invested with Michigan and Regions Bank at the end of October is fifty million, one fifty-nine thousand.
Mr. Dawson, your recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve the statement of cash flow by October twenty twenty-three.
Board, do we have a motion?
I make that motion.
We have a second.
Second.
All in favor, I?
I.
Any vote, I have it. Certification of bank reconciliation by October twenty twenty-three, Miss Gray?
All banks take this having reconciled with no exception.
Mr. Dawson, your recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve the certification of bank reconciliations from October twenty twenty-three.
Board, do we have a motion?
I make that motion.
We have a second.
Second. We have a motion from the chairman. We take a second from the chairman.
All in favor, I?
I.
Any vote, I have it. Thank you, Ms. Graves.
Add a thing, sir. Personnel, personnel active this afternoon. We have pages one and two recommendations, pages three and four personnel changes. Page five is a memo from myself. This request the board approved, uh, within five days. The forty hours of administrative leave paid between December the eighth, two thousand twenty-three through January the nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four. This is in the event that school is closed, delayed or dismissed early. This will be granted to less than one thirty-eight persons. Page six, a memo from myself. This request the board, um, approved to add one additional junior education unit to South Haven High School. This will be effective January the second, twenty twenty-four. This addition will pay through district funds for one hundred eighty-seven day licensed pay scale. And it will be absorbed through attrition for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year possible. Page seven is a memo from Secretary Jenkins, Department of Athletics, on volunteers, aspiring professionals for the remainder of this twenty-three, twenty-four school year. The basketball at the citizens, middle softball at Wusworth High, master in Wusworth High School. Page eight is a memo from the statewide county manager. It requests to approve an overlap and pay for the transportation first position in the transportation department. They have an employee that begins employment on December sixth, uh, twenty-three. And this will train for the new position. There will be an overlap that current employee will be leaving on December fifteenth. December sixth to December fifteenth, maybe overlap. We have the train. Page nine is a memo on supplements for focus schools. We'll be recognizing the, um, twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And then page ten, these are requests additional pay from the senior high director of federal programs on teachers who will work as after-school tutors for Horn Lake High School special education students. This will be over four hundred hours and will begin twelve at twenty-three and end on five, twenty-two, twenty-four.
Mr. Dawson, your recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve personnel's present.
Board, do we have a motion?
I make that motion.
We have a second, board?
Second.
All in favor, I?
I.
Any vote, I have it. Mr. Corr, resident chief?
Yes, sir. I have a matter of discussion, second decision.
Public comment. At the board, we welcome public participation at our board meetings. While this is not a, a debate setting, our question and answer setting, we reserve this time at our regular meeting for public comment and for citizens who have requested to appear. The board policy allows for thirty minutes for public comment. Public comment involving student matters or personnel matters must be heard at one time each in executive session. Each person who wishes to comment will have up to five minutes to speak until the thirty-minute time limit is reached. When I ask for public comment, please state your name. If you have a student matter or personnel matter, please state that information as well. Do we have anyone here who wishes to make a comment? Do we have anyone here who wishes to make a comment? Be now, that's what it is. Uh, we need a motion to close this session to determine whether the board can enter into executive session for the following matter. Student matter regarding early graduation, student matters regarding pre-kindergarten tuition, residency appeal, request of fear and potential litigation in personnel contact matters. Do you have?
I don't know if the question is here, is this?
I said it.
Elson here?
Is anyone here?
Sir.
We have the.
We have, uh, do we need a motion uh, to go into executive session? I have a motion?
I make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chase will come back and inform you whether or not we'll say it in executive session. The next board meeting, the day, the day where the board, twenty twenty-four, not three.